Regular meeting of Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. We adjourn in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking at our agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I'll second motion.
Mr. Hilton, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion carries. Are there any comments, patron comments, on the agenda items? Seeing none, we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 7:00-8:14 and the special meeting of 7:29-14. The personnel report, which included retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of the July 2014 Claims Number 36135 through Number 34401 and an advance payment to Way Cool Productions Incorporated. Donation, approval of donation of $1,000 from the Discovery Education and Toyota USA to be used at CHS. Donation of a band trailer for CHS from the CHS Band Boosters. The approval of the facility usage forms by the Connersville Gymnastic Booster Club. Those are the items within the consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second? Mr. Jones? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Moving into our action items, we have a personnel report by Dr. Behr.
Thank you, Mr. Virchitt, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. We have several persons for your consideration this evening. First on your certified staff, Leah Byers, elementary teacher, Fayette Central. Bailey Dockerty, science teacher, CMS. Abby Campbell, elementary teacher, Maplewood. Caitlin Bizzmenti, English teacher, CHS. Also support staff members, Sandra Burton, bus driver, transportation. Jackie Butler, custodian, CMS. Robert Creach, bus driver. Mark Fowler, bus driver. Tina Bowe, bus aide. Sixto Holblin, bus aide. William Boyne, Isaac's bus driver. Sean Murphy, custodian at Eastview. Donna Neal, bus aide. Joshua Smith, bus driver. Lenny Westerfield, bus driver. Mark Weston, bus driver. And Woody Thompson, also bus driver. The extracurriculars tonight, Judith Chano Medina, its former language department chair. Leah Fishman, its varsity girls soccer at CHS. Lauren Foster, varsity assistant football coach. Adam King, freshman football coach. Brett Lee, JV volleyball coach. Ann Paxton, varsity assistant football coach. And Stanley, special education department chair. And in addition, on attachment A, we have a listing of the recommendations for 2014-2015 bus driver contracts. Those persons can contract for your consideration this evening, Mr. Virchitt.
Okay, you've heard Dr. Behr's report. What is your action, board?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel report.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Do I hear a second?
Second, Dan.
Mr. Hunt? Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we have the permission to advertise the 2015 budget, the 2015 to 2026 bus replacement plan, and the 2015 through 2017 capital projects plan. Ms. Pollitt?
Thank you, Mr. Virchitt. At your places this evening is the notebook that you received me in L.A. related to the budget. The first tab is some information regarding the budgeting process from the Department of Local Government Finance that explains the various steps to the budgeting process for a school corporation with an elected school board. The next tab is the, are the notices of the budget, the bus replacement plan, and the capital projects plan I'm asking permission to advertise. The next several tabs in your notebook represent the budget that we will be holding our hearing on at the September meeting, so you may wish to review those in advance. And, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions between now and then or at the hearing. And then the last tab in the notebook are preliminary prepared documents that will be submitted for your consideration for approval at the October meeting for approval of the budget. But this evening is just asking your permission to advertise the budget, informing the community of our public hearing at the September meeting, and then you will be considering approving the budget at our October meeting. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, what is your thoughts regarding this permission to advertise?
I'd like to give permission to advertise the budget as presented.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
Second, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Questions, discussion?
Question.
All right.
I see a couple of different cases. On the bus replacements, is it 26 or 25? I don't know. In your memos, 25.
I'm sorry, it's 20, it's 26.
Okay.
15 to 26.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we have a policy update reading, first reading, Dr. Hodges.
Board in your packet, I gave you a copy of revised policy as it relates to possessing firearms on school property. You may recall the General Assembly passed statute that was a little bit more permissive than what our policy said, and so this is an attempt in first read to come more in compliance with what statute now says. This is, the language that you see in red is what has been suggested by the Indiana School Boards Association. We had a couple of options on how we looked at that, but I think this was the more restrictive paragraph of that. And there's also one that speaks, sentence that speaks specifically to our school resource officer, and then one that deals specifically with school board members, so. If you have questions, we'd be happy to answer those. If you'd like some further research before second reading, we'd be happy to conduct that for you as well.
Any questions or anything?
Actually, we don't need to do any.
Nope.
Just a first reading.
Okay, if there are no questions or comments, we don't really need to take action since this is the first reading.
We'll bring that back next month.
Everybody okay? All right, then we'll move on to the next item, affirmation of 2015 Support Staff Employee of the Year, Dr. Hodges.
Board in your packets, you have a memo from Dr. Behr that talks a little bit about Support Staff Member of the Year. If you would, and really more for the public, those of you that were at opening day heard me say this, but I'll repeat myself, again, say that this year's Support Staff Member of the Year has held a number of positions in the school corporation over the years, such as elementary educational assistant, elementary health assistant, administrative assistant to an elementary principal, central office receptionist. And for the past four years, she has been the executive assistant to the assistant superintendent. She works each day until her tasks are complete, devoting the necessary time and energy to ensure deadlines are met and the quality is of high level, to make everyone involved look good. One trait she possesses that is a real treasure to those around her is her ability to talk to people in a way that makes them feel welcomed, listened to, and respected. She has the uncanny ability in greeting a very upset parent or community member and deflating their anger within the first five minutes she spins with them. Her eye contact, soft spoken voice, and attentive listening skills all contribute to her ability in getting those wanting to file a complaint to listen to her rationale as to where misunderstandings may have happened and how we can move forward in making the situation better for those involved. She is exactly the type of person you want as your front line in meeting, greeting and responding to the greater school community. It's my pleasure to recommend to you tonight that you affirm the Fayette County School Corporation 2015 Support Staff Member of the Year, Cindy Lynch.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to affirm?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to affirm the 2015 Support Staff Employee of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second motion? Discussion, questions? Then all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next is the appointment to the Fayette County Public Libraries Board, Dr. Hodges.
Board, we did advertise, asked for people who were interested to submit letters of interest. We had three respond to that. I met with the committee of Mr. Virchitt, Ms. Boyd, and Mr. Hunt. We went over those, and happy tonight to recommend to you Judith Medina as your representative to the Fayette County Library Board Trustees.
You've heard this, appointment to the library board. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President, I would like to make the motion to appoint Judith Medina to the public library board.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Mr. Jones, you? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That completes our action items. Now we will move into the discussion. Dr. Rieke.
Thank you, Mr. Virchitt. Members of the board, what I'd like to do today is give us a little, just an overview of what we have learned about our assessment results from last year. Some of these results are very new to us, but we have been spending some analysis time. But I also want to wrap this up and get you looking forward to next month's discussion with our school planning plans because we should be focusing our work on what we are, our test analysis have shown us where we need to do that. So this is kind of a little bit different than in the past, but there'll be some similar pieces as well. And just as a reminder, there's a couple of new things here, but when we talk about I-Step, this is something that we are, you know, challenged to do by the state, and we have not changed the grade levels that we're assessing for the different subject areas. That's been very constant since like 2009. What is probably the newest part is at the very bottom, they're becoming more high stakes than they used to be because of including the growth rate in the last couple of years. So the students that, even the students that don't pass, we're expected to show growth in, and that's another challenge, which is a good challenge for us to have. And also, we want to be very closely aligned to our school improvement goals, and we're tightening that up as well. Categories remain the same, pass plus, pass, and did not pass. Fayette County, we've done a very good job with the pass rate, and we're putting some extra emphasis and trying to get more students at the pass plus because what that means is becoming college and career readiness, that will just open the opportunities for our students. This is this year's comparison by grade level, third through eighth grade, up here as compared to the state, top box being English Language Arts, bottom being Mathematics. And the exciting part about this is we are now entering into some of the 90% pass rates. And we'll see the two green boxes there in Mathematics. We've not been there before, so we're excited about what the data is showing in that particular case. We still would like to see green all over and have 90s in everywhere, and we think we can do it. We're having a hard time, you know, sometimes keeping up with the expectations from the state, and we're met with some new challenges this year, but we've got a very good leadership team. We have great professional development support being put forth with our teachers, so things we're putting in place definitely is building a strong foundation for Fayette County schools. This is, just shows you longitude over the spring of 2010, where the English Language Arts as a whole, when we set goals for Dr. Hodges and Cabine and I, we set goals for pass rate of English Language Arts for all of our students, so we don't divide that by grade level. And so when we want to hit that 80% or above, that's what these charts are showing, that in the last few years, we have been above, in fact, above the state. The red bars are always longer than the blue bars, which is a good thing, and we continue to perform in English Language Arts as a whole. Mathematics, the same, we're a little bit taller as far as our pass rate goes, with Mathematics reaching the 86. That's all third through eighth grade Mathematics students, so continuing our work, but even refining it so we can improve more. This is a graph that is sharing a little bit of that pass plus comparison, because I was interested in seeing, I know we've had some efforts put towards having more of our students reach the higher levels of achievement. English Language Arts on the left, 13 to 14, there's a little bit of growth there, it's still very similar. The number or percent of students reaching pass plus has not grown, and we're getting, we've done some things with curriculum, as you know, with the high school level, but also in I-Read and with our balanced literacy, we now have a new program with reading and writing, second year of the reading and the first year of our writing component, that we do believe will contribute to more pass plus, so we're excited about that. And Mathematics, another green box there. What that is saying is 44% of our fifth graders not only passed, but they were in the pass plus category. That is phenomenal, when you have nearly, you know, almost 100 of your students performing that high. Doesn't mean we don't have room to grow, that doesn't mean they got a perfect on the assessment. We still learn some areas of Mathematics we can improve upon, but we are showing, you know, a greater percent in Mathematics at most of those grade levels significantly, reaching higher levels. Last year, when I showed you this in October, we still didn't have our science grades, so this year in August, we do have some science grades to talk about, which is good. This is comparing Fayette County with the state rate, red is Fayette County, of course. Fourth and sixth are the only elementary grades that test Science, that's why they're up there, and fifth and seventh, they test Social Studies through I-Step. We are very close to the state rate. I will tell you, seventh grade, Social Studies, it was the opposite last year, we were above state, this year we're a little bit below. So it's, it's not the highest emphasis that we have because it doesn't have as much of an accountability against us, but it is very important that we do concentrate on those areas because when we talk about being good readers and researchers, it should show up in the scores. So we do have some work to do in these areas, and I believe some of the literacy pieces that we're putting in place in the writing are going to help us make some growth. In total Science, we were above the state average, which is good. Here again, like I said, in Social Studies, we're just below. This is how you can kind of look at a cohort group of students moving through our system. I call it quasi-cohort because it, there are some students that have moved in and out of the numbers, but it's as that class progresses through the grades at Fayette County, there's a great many of those students that are still together and generating these numbers. And the idea is, is that as long as you stay in Fayette County, we hopefully more, more students are passing because we've had longer to work with you. And in general, the numbers do increase as you progress through the years, but not always. And I will give, if you look at the math on the bottom, if you look right where that arrow was showing, we had a very high success rate in 92, with sixth graders in 2012, and then in seventh grade, we took a dip at 79. And just some credit to Beth Denham, the principal there, took that very seriously and did some intentional work with the data and work with teachers and tried to analyze and then redo their instructions so that they can address those needs. And if you look at that, they're back up to 88% passing. That's what it takes. It takes reaction and really unwinding, unwrapping those numbers and doing some good work that way. This is a longitudinal graph showing both, passing both Language Arts and Mathematics, and there's some gaps between those, just to make the graph more, you can get a longer distance, but we were, we're way ahead of where we were in the year 2000, because that's a long time ago now. And we're pretty consistently in the 80s now with passing goals, and that, that's to be commended. Of course, we always want to improve on those scores and reach the 90s, and I think we're, we're going to get there. We've got a strong base and we're starting to creep up there. This is only our second year in I-Read with a grade three, where we were held accountable for those scores. And the state had set a goal for all schools to reach 90% and all districts to reach 90%. We give it in the spring, and then we have students that do not pass it in the spring, attend summer school, and we did that again this year with a second opportunity to pass, and we were able to get all of our general education and many of our special education over the pass rate of I-Read. So we did hit the 90% pass this year, which is commendable, I believe. And again, we're reacting and working towards what the assessment said. And of course, assessments, there are three. There's an Algebra I, an English 10, and Biology 1, which we give also at grade 10. It's an interesting looking graph, and there's a lot of data behind this and story behind it, but the yellow line is the English Language Arts, and we are starting to dip a little bit. We have put in a very, the new digital curriculum this year. We have done a study last year on the close reading and helping Social Studies, Economics, Science teachers, all of them become better at teaching students literacy in their subject. All of that will hopefully contribute to increasing our English Language Arts scores. Our ACT recently came in, it's not part of this presentation, but they did go up a little bit in the different areas, so we are seeing some of the data points increasing, so some of the work is already showing up in the data. Our biggest celebration here is in the Algebra I and Mathematics. In two years, we have increased over 24, by 24%. That's very statistically significant there. We've done some, I can tell you with, between the leadership of the administration and the lead teachers, they are really unwrapping and working with students, some of them taking an additional semester to complete the coursework, has made a huge difference in the pass rate. I still think we have some areas that we can even get higher than that, I believe, and we're putting some things in place with that. And that was not a new book, it was not technology necessarily, it was a focus on the data and addressing the instruction. Biology, the 74 here is kind of an outlier, and that was a year where the assessment changed, or we moved, we moved to sophomore, we had Biology students moving from freshman year into sophomore year. It was being done throughout the state, and one thing we wanted to do is give our students an extra year of Science, and we are not reaching our goals here. I know Mr. Judd is, I'm working with the department chairs in the department, and they are, they're figuring out some of the things that they, we're going to make some changes on this next year, but we are concerned with this. We are doing well at the elementary Science, but when we get to Biology, it's not coming up in the ECA scores. So kudos to Mr. Judd in taking this very seriously, and I do anticipate a big jump in the score next year in Biology. Here's some of our highlights with our I-Step. Here again, we're above the 80% pass rate in English Language Arts and Math. We're starting to see the 90s come up in Mathematics, and our pass plus rates are on a rise. Grade four and six, we have exceeded the state average in Science, which we're proud of. Passing both, we've actually increased, both the state went up and so did we, so we're still ahead of the state with students that can pass both of those subjects on I-Step. Still growing since 2000, and contributing much of the success that we're seeing through some very good responses to the data and the leadership team. The instructional coaches, department chairs are taking on more significant roles and working with their peers and their colleagues, and I think it's beginning to show, and the principals can address what they've seen as well. For our ECAs, we were very proud of our Algebra success, and we feel confident that we can continue in that. Biology scores are declining, but we've got a plan in place to address that. And knowing that in the A to F scores, when we, when the high school and the schools get their grades, they're now looking at those who don't pass the ECA the first time, they're going to monitor and track the schools of how many you can get that failed to that pass rate before they graduate. And so it's more important, it seems that that raises the accountability, but that's good for kids, because we'll keep tighter rein on making sure they're getting the right resources so that they can get past those benchmarks. So our action steps, things that we're looking for, we're already, some of these are in place, but we're expanding. We're monitoring the instruction for that critical thinking, very important for college and career readiness. We're looking at professional learning communities. We've had them for a long time. We're now getting better at the work that they should be doing and the discussions they should be having, and that outcome should start resembling that. Working collaboratively with our leadership teams and analyzing the new Indiana academic standards. Yes, we have new standards again, and we will have a new test in the spring, and we're not going to let that overcome us. We have a plan in place, we're building professional development around it, and we're going to step up to the challenge. We also are expanding the new digital curriculum. You all approved the English Language Arts High School, and that's just the beginning. We're looking at, working with principals and lead teachers to help us with that crosswalk to the new standards and putting the training, taking some intensive training with the state. Fortunately, they're providing some, and then bringing those lead teachers back, providing training to the rest of the teachers. NWA is also changing this year. They have actually aligned to the Indiana academic standards. We chose to go ahead and make that transition this year. Our teachers are a little nervous, but we got a plan in place. We want them aligning to what the students are going to be assessed later in third grade, so it makes sense for us to make that transition. Curriculum maps, which is the order of what people teach and the different subjects, are very important that they are aligned across the district, so our students can, if, we do have a lot of transience between our student, between our elementary grades, and we want to make sure they don't have gaps because we're teaching fractions at a different time or we're teaching verbs at a different time. We want to make sure we're relatively the same, so as they migrate across the district, they're still getting all the instruction they're supposed to have. We also, this week, rewriting the pre and post assessments for the Science and Social Studies at fourth and sixth grade and the fifth, the fifth grade Social Studies, sorry. Teachers gave us some input on last year's, even though those standards aren't changing, we can make the assessments better, and so we're taking action now so that the teachers are getting their input heard. We have a new acuity system. This is, this has really changed the entire plan we had for assessment. It's not ready to go yet, the state's still pushing that out, but we're, we had our e-coaches go-to training on Friday to get all the information, they're putting it out slowly, but it is a change midstream. We weren't prepared for having, we thought we already had a plan in place, but we are moving forward, we're going to figure this out. We no longer will have what's called a predictive measure. They can't make it predictive because they've never given it before. In order to get predictive scores, you've had to have a history of what the pre-test scores do, what it means to align and how successful you're going to be. So now they're calling them a readiness assessment. They are very different and different alignment from the way the assessment was done yet last year. So we're just getting used to this, and we're learning more about that and preparing to do that. We're also expanding data wall practice in middle school and high school. Elementary did a phenomenal job of growing that last year. We're going to do it a little bit differently at secondary, and Beth and Randy have been working with me in, in working with their teachers and what's going to work for them that's meaningful data, but I hope you'll be able to do some walking, walking and looking at their data rooms and their data hallways this year, as you did with the elementaries, because it is a way for us to monitor how the students are learning and the growth that they're having. And we're going to continue training and supporting our teachers in this close reading strategies, and that is the teaching of learning how to read any text, any informational text, no matter what subject it is, and all of us will be literacy teachers of some sort. We're committed to excellence, and we're putting action in place to ensure our students have access to a college or career upon graduation. That's our ultimate goal, so the greater their success is, the more successful we will be. Any questions about, this is very quick, but just kind of a synopsis. You'll see much of these same types of things coming up in the school improvement plans.
I've always had a question, curious about, okay, you tell us the number of students that pass. What is the passing score for?
It depends on the grade level, and that is some of the, that's some of the things, and I just had this conversation with Mrs. Denham, because, you know, those 96 pass rate, sixth grader coming into her seventh grade, but the teachers are saying, but they still have some gaps. How can that be? Because the 96 is the 96% correct. That's, that's, you know... That's, that's, you know, people think that they did 100 percent on the test, they did well. There are still areas that they don't get right, and what the teachers are learning about what are those areas that they're still not successful, they haven't mastered. But they have passed enough of the answers or got them correct to have a pass score. It's just a cut score. So out of 800, you may have a score of 542, and you passed. But what that shows us or tells us, there's still a lot of information that the student hasn't mastered, and it's up to us to find out what that is. So we're getting better at reaching that benchmark of passing, that's how we're getting to the 90s, but there's still areas of instruction that we need to focus on and analyze, and that's where our work is, guides us. That's what the pass plus is important to me, because that does mean the scale score's getting higher, and they're getting more correct on I-Step. So that is an important thing to monitor. Anything else?
Dr. Riki, the data wall always seemed like a good idea to me, and it just, what finally got us to the point of where we're going to add it to middle school and high school?
The research. We, just because you don't, when you're just putting something new out there, it's better to start small. So the elementary had already been doing some things with data in a public way, and we just grew on that, so we built the foundation there. It's different, it's a little easier when you have 30 kids or 25 students too, and to monitor the data. When you have 140 students, it's more difficult to know, okay, who am I going to be focused on and what data am I going to monitor? We have fewer tools of monitoring as well. Their assessments aren't all common, so it's a different professional learning community conversation, but they're getting more that they are common, they're building on that, which is going to enable them to do some comparisons. They can do, like attendance, they can do some of those big items of even graduation and rate, but that's kind of autopsy a lot of times, you know, it's already done, and we can do that study, and it's kind of our data dashboard. But how are we progressing in learning our curriculum in Economics? Well, where do we start, and what do we do with the first unit? What am I looking for measures, and how are we progressing through that? And it's just all about understanding and communicating with the students, as well as your colleagues, how things are working. So if a teacher is showing a lot of growth with their students, there's supposed to be a conversation of wanting to know what they're doing to get the students to learn, and then we can spread that knowledge. If you keep it all in a notebook on your desk, you cut out, you're doing great things, but it doesn't grow out of your classroom. So the research shows that you do it discreetly, students' names aren't used, but there is a coding system so that the teachers or the adults and the administrators can have conversations about what students are learning and why are they learning. It's hard to unwrap that. That's just in a nutshell.
Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Riki. Okay, at this time, are there any public comments? All right, moving on, then we go into the Superintendent's Discussion Group reports. Hearing none, to Principals, Directors reports. Director of Personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of items. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for their ongoing support, allowing us to, especially this time of year, to employ staff prior to official confirmation, means a lot. It is difficult to get everybody to place, and your faith and our decision-making and bringing them folks to you, we appreciate being able to employ them ahead of time, get them started prior to official confirmation. That's not the typical way we do it, but this time of year, we appreciate that. To report to overseeing the Transportation and Food Service, that both of those programs are going very, very well, our Food Service is going well. A few adjustments, but the students are used to getting in lines, and things are moving very well. A lot of participation in our Food Service program, Lunch Programs, Breakfast Programs. We added Eastview as a universal breakfast site, and will be added, and we're going to start here fairly soon. Our Transportation, and talking with Jane Oakley, is really sprouting and kind of a, it's created a problem, but a good problem, because of more students this year at the first part of the school year that are riding and have ridden a number of years, which has caused Jane, after the first five days, do a lot of juggling and rerouting students to get in line buses. So she's pretty excited about that, having a number of more riders, and it's pretty neat to see. Not to the point where we have to add drivers, but it's a matter of getting people the right routes and making some adjustments, so we'll hear more about that later. We'll be meeting with our new teachers, a follow-up meeting on the week from tomorrow, on Wednesday, the 20th, to kind of see how they're getting along and see if, what are their issues? They wish they would have asked maybe earlier, but found out after getting into the trenches for a couple of weeks, we're looking at that. And then finally, our teacher negotiations will gear up on the 21st, a week from Thursday, and we'll have more to report to you as we get started. Look forward to the collegial conversation and professional opportunities to work through a contract and get that settled, and get some information to you on that, hopefully early September or something. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Burchett.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Director of Finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just want to take a minute to acknowledge John Green and the Maintenance Department. They had a really short summer, and they had a lot of work to do, and they got it done. And they, they should be acknowledged for that. I'd also like to thank the custodians from all of the buildings for their flexibility this year with the high school plumbing project. They welcomed high school custodians into their building and partnered with them, and then they returned to service by going to the high school towards the end of the summer to help get the high school shored up right before school started. So there was a lot of work and a lot of flexibility this summer, and I think those two groups of people should be thanked and acknowledged for that.
Very good, very good. Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Couple other groups I think that we should acknowledge. Number one, we've had a lot of issues with our networking lately, and I know Dr. Hodges has spent an enormous amount of time trying to get solutions, and Mr. Miller has had his team working overtime, putting a lot of extra effort, and actually putting some of their projects aside to make sure that we're up and running and we have the infrastructure working properly. We have, there were some issues that were, that happened that we need to have addressed that were not correctly done when they were installed, and so that just creates work that was not on your to-do list, and it's, it's been extremely stressful. I think they reached some success. We still aren't quite, I don't think we have all, everything worked out, but we tested it today. I also want to give credit to the Technology Department and the high school planning team. They deployed the iPads today, and we were on pins and needles. They had an awesome plan, they had a 90-minute whole planned out, step by step. They had videos doing training, we had created our own videos, Mr. Judd did a video, our e-learning coach, Vicky Long, did a video, talking to the students about the hows and the whats and et cetera. I don't think they got it all completed in the 90, but they have a backup to follow up, and I got a couple of great looking pictures of kids out in the courtyard with their iPads and just doing the learning even between classes, and I know Mr. Judd saw them doing it at cafeteria, so we're just very excited, but it wasn't easy. And we have a lot of work still ahead of us, but I just want to commend Mr. Judd and Mr. Miller in particular for their efforts to help us go, because if you don't have people like them, we can't do it. So we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Excellent. Superintendent's report.
Good board, I think the main thing I can say is I think the school year is off to a terrific start. Tremendous amount of work done over the summer, and it was a little shorter summer than what we're accustomed to, it's already been alluded to, but through maintenance, custodian, personnel, technology, and on and on, those folks did an incredible job to get it, get us to the point where we could get up and running and help our students and staff be prepared to continue the great results that Dr. Riki shared with us before. We're just looking forward to a great school year. Thank you for the opportunity to work together again.
Very good. Do we have any, for good of the cause, comments? I would like to say again, I appreciate our Chamber of Commerce sponsoring the New Teachers Lunch, and that's a very nice event, and what a great way to welcome those people to our community, and I thought it was very, very well done, those several of you were there. Any other? Do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.